All right, I'm calling us back to session at six thirty. We'll start off with roll call. Kurt Kirby Gonzalez.
Present.
Trustee Vanegas.
Present.
I too am present. Trustee Wong and President Coffey will not be here tonight. We have items discussed in closed session. Government Code five four nine five six dot nine D two pending potential litigation information received. Government Code section five four nine five seven. Public employee discipline dismissal release. Information received. Government Code section five four nine five seven point six. Conference with labor negotiators. WSTA, CSEA and management information received. Now we will do our indigenous land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land currently occupied by the Washington Unified School District as the traditional home of the Patwin people. These sovereign people have been caretakers of the area since time immemorial. Despite centuries of genocide and occupation, the Patwin people continue as vibrant and resilient federally recognized and under recognized tribes, bands and rancherias. Today, we honor and recognize our Patwin tribal neighbors for their contributions as caretakers of the Sacramento Valley and honor their sustained existence with their blessing and continued guidance. WSD seeks to provide an accessible, equitable and supportive institution of learning and experience. Okay, moving on, we are going to do the pledge of allegiance. Can I have Brittany Billingsley lead us in the pledge? Okay, so we're moving on to approval of the agenda. Is there anybody wishing to remove an item from the agenda or move it?
Yes, there's one request if we could move from the consent agenda. If we could move item four C to action.
And we will move four C to number four on. Anything else? With that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion, the agenda is approved. Moving on to communications and celebration. So presentation of WSD school bond video transforming WSD. See how your support is building brighter futures. Yorgos Kassanis, Executive Director of Communications.
Good evening trustees, nice to see you.
Good evening.
It's nice to be in an air conditioned room, not Raider Stadium, so. This evening, I'm going to keep my presentation pretty short. The purpose of me being here in front of you today is to highlight the video that we will show in just a minute. Really, the driving force behind this video is to try and showcase all of the amazing work that has been led not just by this board, by all of our boards, by every person that's been part of the WUSD administrative team, teachers, classified employees, everyone throughout the decades that has really contributed to the amazing transformation that's happened over the last thirty forty years, starting with measures R, Q, V and Z. Really, the best way to do that is a visual representation. So everyone can actually see firsthand what some of these projects are and the impact that they have in our community. It also is to meant to serve as inspiration for future generations and for us that are here at this time right now in terms of seeing the fruits of our labors in front of us and being able to express our gratitude to the residents of West Sacramento for their contributions, not just monetary contributions, but their trust and their faith in the school district for wanting to continue on with projects like this. So with that, I'm going to allow Mario to press play on the video and we'll allow the video to speak for us tonight.
In the heart of West Sacramento, the Washington Unified School District has been shaping futures for decades. From its roots in nineteen seventeen, when the community prioritized education with the construction of the original Washington Grammar School, WUSD has evolved into the premier provider of high quality education in the area. Join us as we showcase the transformative impact of our school bond projects, reflecting our commitment to academic excellence and the pursuit of a bright future grounded in equity, excellence and empowerment for every student every day. It all began in nineteen ninety nine with Measure R, a seventeen point five million dollar investment, made the foundation for excellence. The final Measure R payment will be on August first, twenty thirty one, allowing us to realize the dreams of the earliest residents who built the original Washington Grammar School in nineteen seventeen. Measure Q issued in two thousand and four with an original budget of fifty two million dollars took our commitment further. We're proud to say that our students have benefited from this forward looking initiative. The final payment on Measure Q is set for August first, twenty thirty one. In twenty fourteen, Measure B marked a new chapter with an original budget of forty nine point eight million dollars. Fast forward to twenty twenty three and we're transforming classrooms into spaces that inspire creativity. The final payment is scheduled for August first, twenty forty two. The most recent addition to our success story is Measure Z issued in twenty twenty with an impressive one hundred and fifty million dollar ambition. As of June third, twenty twenty one, sixty million dollars has been invested in our schools. The future is bright as we await completion of the Westfield Village modernization in July of twenty twenty four, Elkhorn Village in July of twenty twenty six, and the River City High School Performing Arts Center in twenty twenty eight. We are well positioned for success as we continue to build, innovate and create spaces that nurture the potential within each student. With every completed project, Washington Unified School District reaffirms its commitment to providing a high quality education for the diverse and dynamic community of West Sacramento. Together, we celebrate the successes of measures R, Q, V and Z. As we look forward, these investments ensure the legacy of education in West Sacramento continues to thrive, paving the way for generations to come. We extend our heartfelt gratitude to the voters of West Sacramento for their unwavering support. It's through your vision and commitment that we've been able to create these transformative spaces for our students.
That's our latest video that just came out this week, so. The real, the other thing that I wanted to mention too is the connection of the video and previous projects to things that are transpiring before us in real time. That takes us to next week on August thirteenth. We're hosting a ribbon cutting ceremony for the official completion of Westfield Village's home campus. So we're really excited about that. Like I said before, it's an opportunity for us to bring to life previous projects, previous work, previous efforts from other generations, connecting it to what's happening in real time. We also, the dual purpose behind a lot of these videos is to use them during peak enrollment time when we're trying to draw interest in our district for prospective families to want to come to Washington Unified to learn more about us, our history, our legacy and what we want to see for the future as well. So there's a lot of dual purpose there in a lot of ways that we can use these moving forward for marketing purposes, so thank you.
A second, is there any public comment on this? I don't think there would be.
No public comment.
Any board particular comments?
I just want to thank you, Yorgos, for this. And I know our fiscal team has worked really hard also to be transparent in the money that we've spent for bonds. It's all up on our website and then taking that and making a visual that really, I think, helps the community see where their money has gone. We're so fortunate to have such a supportive community that has helped us make these things happen. And I can't wait for that ribbon cutting, so thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Yes, I just want to say, great work. I'm big on exposure, you know, the idea of really taking control of the positive narrative. You know, there's so much work, there's so much happening that's not even in the video, right? But just the idea of putting positivity out there and allowing these students to see themselves. And, you know, I've said it from the beginning is West Sacramento, we are leaders in a lot of ways. And it's, it's important that, that our community feels like they're leading the way versus always, you know, following or whatever it may be. Like it's, there's a lot of gems, there's a lot of greatness here. So thank you for, for putting a beautiful video together, thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to number two, recognition of Deloitte's Impact Day day contributions to Washington Unified School District, Dr. Jay Burns.
So June Flores, the amazing coordinator couldn't make it tonight. So I'm going to present, so board superintendent, thank you for having me. This really isn't about me. This is about the amazing work that our community schools, United Way and Deloitte did. Bianca, thank you for being here from United Way. Anybody else here, Bianca, am I missing anyone? Okay, not just you, the amazing Bianca, right, a West Sac prodigy. So this was a great day, right? I want to celebrate the day of giving at WSD on June seventh, two thousand and twenty four, okay? An amazing day. Community Schools, United Way comes to us and said, guess what? We have a recommendation from Deloitte, they want to do a day of giving. United Way brought this partner in, we're so grateful for United Way. Everybody stare at Bianca, we're so grateful for her hard work. So they come out and they select one or two organizations for its Keystone Community Service Project, Impact Day. And this year, Deloitte contacted its United Way Capital Region Partner. United Way suggested WSD Community Schools, leading to a hundred and fifty practitioners dedicating their day on June seventh to positively impact our community. They came out in forces. Can we get this going? Can we hit the next slide? This ties into all the great things we do, strong partnerships with families and community, community schools. Look at this, look up here, so they come out, a hundred and fifty practitioners, they're at Westfield and Wuva, seventy volunteers cleaning up the garden and then they help, they helped them pack, helped them pack, right? They're moving boxes from the old campus where they were for the year for Westfield over to the new campus, the beautiful campus. Yolo, fifty five volunteers, campus cleanup. Elkhorn, twenty five volunteers, activities, the garden preparation, it was amazing. They even said the cleanup, the garden was overrun with four foot tall weeds. And I said, man, almost as tall as me, that's crazy. But they went out there, they cleaned it up and then the Deloitte volunteers helped to pack the boxes. So thank you to the United Way for facilitating this valuable connection for our district. Your support has made a significant impact. We extend our heartfelt thanks to Deloitte for our tremendous, for their tremendous impact. We want it to make this an annual event, we want them to come back, actually want them to come to my house. Okay, next slide. This is what Westfield before and after look like, look at these boxes. I hope they use their knees, don't bend at the waist. Next slide. So once again, thank you to United Way, thank you to Deloitte. And we want to thank Kerry, Pina and her crew at Maintenance, right, operations and transportation. They helped us get through everything we needed to do. Basically, their efforts ensured all projects were approved and equipped with the necessary tools and supplies. This was a great day. Just a minute ago, trustee Vanegas, you said, we're not highlighting the great, this was great. But we are grateful for Deloitte, we are grateful for the United Way. I am grateful for, oh my goodness, June Flores is a whirlwind. She's doing an amazing job and the community school facilitators are amazing, they're just amazing. So thanks for having us.
Thank you, Jay. Let's see, is there any public comment, Mario?
No public comment.
Okay, any comments from the board?
Yeah, I'll keep it short, but just thank you, just another, you know, another way to show, you know, West Sacramento is only, is really, we want to do it. We want to get in there and participate and engage and be involved, so thank you for, for the acknowledgement. Thank you to United Way and Bianca, hello, hello. Yeah, awesome, awesome presentation, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jay. Let me ask you this, is somebody from here from Deloitte?
No, no, we tried to get him out.
Okay, I just want to make sure I didn't want to miss anybody, right? Like I want to make sure we acknowledge those that are here. So thank you, Bianca, and thank you for everyone that volunteered and helped participate in all those activities because that was phenomenal. So thank you and I wish June was here.
Me too.
We appreciate.
Yeah, we do appreciate you too, Jay, but thank you. Okay, moving on, let's see, where are we on the agenda? Okay, WSTA report, Doug Knapp and others maybe? No, just Doug Knapp, okay.
All right, good evening, Superintendent Hildreth, Vice President, President Pazotti, Trustees Cabinet, it's good to see you. I will try and keep it short tonight, but you know, whenever I say that. I want to start out just by reiterating my comments at the last board meeting about doing more than just doing a land acknowledgement and actually acknowledging the Patwin people by inviting them to a board meeting. We have indigenous people, we have Native Americans in our district. And we actually have a program in our district called the Indian Education Program that's been here a long time ago, used to be a categorical program. And, you know, one of the things about indigenous people that, that the community oftentimes, we say that they're still hidden and unseen. And I think it's important that we don't blindly acknowledge people and then don't make an effort to see them because they are still here. And I'm going to once again urge the board to reach out in our community. We have some of our Indian education teachers right here. By the way, Annette Ochoa gave me my first job in the district. I worked with the Indian Education Program over twenty years ago. They've been here all along, they haven't gone anywhere. In fact, they've been here for tens of thousands of years. And I'm working in my organization to try and make sure I'm not just making blind acknowledgements. So I think we should reach out to our indigenous people in the district and ask them to come to a board meeting and share their experience with us. And then our land acknowledgement will mean something and I will make an effort to do the same. I wanted to talk a little bit, I saw in the agenda tonight that we are, there's an action item to approve speech and language pathologists and SLPA and some, some contractors. And for the last few years, I've been really urging the cabinet in the district to look at whether or not we continue to need to spend money on contractors because in my mind, it's better to hire and keep than train and watch go away. I noticed when looking at the contract last year, when you looked at the contract, you saw that the speech and language pathologists were actually paid the same as the speech and pathologist assistants, the SLPAs. And I'm sure that that extra was profit for the company. This year, it's not, it's not itemized, so we can't see what it is. So I'd like to look into that. It's, to me, it's really critical that we're always evaluating how we spend our money. I know, and I've said this before, I'm going to say it every year. I understand that the reason we do this in the first place is so that we can staff our district. But times change and we need to find out if we have the capacity every single year to do this ourselves. Because I don't want to pay a contractor to do something that a full time teacher could do or a speech and language pathologist could do. It's possible that we still don't have that capacity, but you know, I'm telling you, you guys are hiring some pretty smart people over there in HR and I bet they can do it. I want to make sure that we're spending our money appropriately as, especially as we come into challenging financial times. And on top of that, when I think about, I just watched your beautiful presentation and I, I'm so impressed by those presentations, but sometimes I got to tell you, they gave me the heebie jeebies because it, you know, we have to market, we're, you know, we're like anybody else, but, you know, it, it smells a little funny to me. I don't like, I've been hearing about the Performing Arts Center since the mid two thousands and that presentation made it look like, ah, it's already here. I know there's trouble with the Performing Arts Center. I know we're looking at tough times with this Performing Arts Center and yet we've been promising it. So as much as I like that video, I find it really disingenuous to see this idea that the shining Performing Arts Center is coming when we all know in here that we don't know if that's happening. So let's be real, okay? There's taxpayers in the room, there's teachers who want it, there's students that deserve it. So let's be careful. I mean, I know we've got to do PR, but let's do it responsibly and honestly. I wanted to talk a little bit about communication because that has been improving over the years. And I actually had a really good conversation with Brittany and Autry today. But we still have some work to do. I found out that, and it sounds like from good intentions, that the Chromebooks are being taken away from kindergarten and first grade so that we can do rotating iPads, like two for first grade to rotate through the teachers and one for kindergarten. But to me, that's going backwards. I love iPads, I love technology, but we had one to one access to devices in kindergarten, first grade. And now we're taking the Chromebooks away. And I can tell you right now, teachers use those to do reading groups. They use those to keep kids engaged while they do intervention with classes. And when you share a device, like a cart with devices on it, teachers are supposed to be on the same schedule throughout the day, right? So it makes it really challenging to share a device if you're supposed to all be doing reading groups at the same time and doing math at the same time. And so I, I'm just saying that it sounds like they've already been given to third grade from what I'm hearing, but I don't know. I really appreciate Autry and Brittany reaching out to me and I'm looking forward to communicating more. But how are we, we give tests on these devices and they're going to do S back on these devices. How are we making sure that they're technology literate if we're taking them away at a young age? And then when we take those tests, I guarantee we're going to see scores go down because of access issues. Kids aren't going to know how to use the device when they get into second grade and third grade. I, I really like iPads, but do they have a keyboard? No. Access is totally different and our kids are really used to using those and that's great. And maybe the future is all iPads in schools and that would be great, but it's not all iPads for adults. So I, I would like to see, and, and they're looking into it, I appreciate. Autry and Brittany are looking into seeing if we could get access back. But this, when I talk about communication, shouldn't, I've said this a million times, shouldn't we, and I know intentions were good, but shouldn't we ask the practitioners before we make a decision on something like this? We have to ask the teachers. And maybe we still would have made the decision, but let's have some input. Okay, thank you very much, I'm really excited about school starting. And it's the beginning of another great year in WUSD and I hope to see some of our board members wandering around the first couple of days of school and looking at campuses, thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. Moving right along, we have information discussion and we have no. Oh, wait, let's, I'm skipped over public comments, are there any public comments tomorrow?
And there's no CSEA report today.
Right, there's no CSEA, right? So there's one public comment?
There's a total of three requests.
All right, yeah, let me borrow your glasses, let me, let me read the disclaimer. Okay, public comment disclaimer, at our regularly scheduled board meeting on February ninth, twenty three, twenty twenty three. At our regularly scheduled board meeting on February 9th, 2023, the board resolved the written public comment received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the board but not read into the record during meeting. Members of the public may address the board on topics of our board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the board. Please know the board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this form to items not on the agenda. The board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item limit for an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The board respects the rights of members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of the student's right of privacy, and thus the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it is important for the public to understand that negative or even derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the board may not prohibit such comments, board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this meeting. Okay, thank you. Having said that, Mario, who do we have first?
Our first public comment request is from Nakiba Gregory.
Come on down, Nakiba.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
So the topic I'm going to be talking about tonight is not something I'm happy to be talking about. I'm really sad to say that I don't feel that Washington Unified puts a priority in Indian education, Native Ed. And there's several different things I'm going to be bringing up. But one of them is that there is a culturally appropriate way to do business as a native person. And that means that native people work with native people. They don't want other people coming into their space and then telling them what to do or asking questions or doing things that are not appropriate. And Annette and I, I've been in Indian Ed since 2008, and Annette, you've been in since like 1997. All right, so, you know, we both have a lived experience as native people, and we take it very seriously. And when we're in that space, we know how to navigate within the community. And I feel that the people that are over us, that are telling us, you know, what we can and cannot do, do not understand what is culturally appropriate within the community. And so we keep getting told to do different things that are not to do certain things that are not appropriate for our community. One of the things is that if we, being, native kids are one of the largest groups that don't graduate from high school. And we know that that's a big problem. And it's really important that we have communications with the families throughout the year. We have been told that we cannot have communication with the families, that we cannot have their phone numbers or their addresses or reach out to them, and we've always been able to do that. And that is the way of keeping kids coming to school and being involved and doing everything. And we have been completely shut out on that, which has been very disturbing. Last year was the first year, this year has been going on too. Also, we've been doing the American Indian Summer Institute for, this is our third year. Our first year, we did, we had 13 kids. Last year, we had 10. This year, we had four. And the only four that we had were siblings or repeat. We were not allowed to reach out to our community and get other native students to be involved in American Indian Summer Institute. It is a five-day program that goes into depth about the culture, mental health, drugs and alcohol, finding out about apprenticeship programs, internships, college programs, all sorts of different things. Then, you know, community building, self-esteem building, all sorts of different things. It's wonderful. And at the end, there's this graduation, and, okay.
Finish up your thought, finish up your thought.
There's this graduation, and they get an Apple computer product that they, they get to use.
Okay.
Okay, so obviously I'm talking too long. Okay.
Mario, is this the next person? Okay, come on up, Annette.
Thank you, and thank you for hearing us. And last year, I came and presented to the board, and I was so excited about how, how many kids were going, how many students do we have? And it was a well, wonderful summer that we had. And we got a new director, and so things kind of changed even to something that was very difficult for all of us in the Native American community, like Nakiba says. What I really want to emphasize in here is when we don't pay these people, and there's multiple emails showing that we were reaching out to the district to make sure that they got paid, that kind of, can you imagine not having those students go to that Native American program in American River? The thought that they are going to be kept out for transition and a Native American transition, you know, it's something that I'm here, I'm standing here. I want to be standing here and talking about how I did last year. And it puts me in a situation where I'm wearing this shirt and I'm wearing my, I'm a Native American, but a Washington Unified School District teacher and proud of this district. I'm going to change a little hat. I work for another program. And I have to tell you, we had to, all of us came together to put my classroom together because we had to get it licensed. So I know that this school district has the ability to have the team, but I don't feel it in the Indian Education Program. And that is what I'm going to, it's just something that I want to see in our small program because I know that this school district represents the largest programs in this school district to the smallest because it's about the student. Every single student should have equal rights and success in this school. Yes, now I'm going to give it.
The thing that really upset me is that, so we only had four students this year. One couldn't go because she had to have summer school, so she was out of the program. The other one ended up getting offered another program. She went over and took it because it was better. I sent the email out, he reduced the amount, so it was only $800 for the two students that graduated. And I was told that they, we are not going to be paying that bill because we don't have a contract. I reached out multiple times asking for that contract. I said, even copy the contract, just change the dates, do whatever it has to be done so that we can get those people on there. I feel like that we're an embarrassment with the native community because the native community all over the area is carrying our weight. They're allowing us to come to their programs, they're putting on our graduations. We're not funding it. They're putting on our graduations. Nobody from the district came to the Native Ed graduation. I flew from LA, even though I was supposed to be at a meeting, I flew in just for it. And the thing is, is that, you know, we don't get paid for all the meetings and everything that we go to. We go to it because we're committed. And the thing is, is that we need to focus on our Native Ed students. There's, there's other things I would like to, if I can, just, I wanted to copy things off for you guys and so that you could see it, but I guess I don't have enough time.
Nakiba, we understand, and I'm going to ask Dr. Hildreth to follow up with you so that you can make sure that that information gets to her, okay?
Can I mention one other thing?
Go ahead.
There was a grant that was supposed to be done this year. None of us saw it. It has been sent in, we never signed it, we never saw it, we don't know anything about it.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Nakiba.
Thank you.
All right, Mario, is there another?
Yes, our last general public comment request is from Dani Langford.
Come on down, Dani.
Good evening. So I want to give kudos to Doug first because that video was great, but he's spot on. You cannot be dishonest about things. For instance, the Southport magazine shows that we only own $15,132-something for the high school. That's not true. We overdid, to say that high school is built on the $52 million bond is a flat-out lie. We had the COPs that were hugely indebted in this district because the board at that time wouldn't listen to the community when we begged them not to build the Taj Mahal that we have instead of the comprehensive high school that we voted for. Trust me, I was there at every meeting for five straight years. I know you would have missed me. Some concerns about the meeting from July 25th on the sale of the district office and of the Clarendon campuses. First off, if you sell these pieces of property, you'll never be able to purchase land for what you're going to be able to sell or what we owe on it, because we don't owe on it. And why would you even consider selling Clarendon when it's one of our biggest pieces of property? That's just ludicrous. Also, isn't the DO a hysterical, historical landmark? It was built with art, it was built with FDR dollars, and I know there are issues. I'm not discounting that. But quite frankly, why are we not keeping up on our campuses? If, I live out in the country, we get rats and rodents, mice all the time. When I have an issue, I call my pest control. If my pest control isn't doing their job, guess what? I'm going to go to the next one that's going to do a job. And anytime I need it, personally, my pest control, if I have a problem, I call them. They're out there in between services. Why are we not doing something like that? The White House is older than that building, and they haven't torn that down or sold it, just saying. I have a problem with us committing to a 10-year lease. You're going to, none of you up there are going to be here. The superintendent will be gone, the administration will be gone, you as board members will be gone. But it's the community that's going to be stuck with that debt. Have we not learned from the passports mistakes with getting this district into debt? Please do not do that, please, I am begging you. To say that the COP in 2026 is dropping off and will have that annual payment to play with, how is that possible? When you look at the balance and you look at our annual payment, that does not jive. So I'm concerned because we're going to have issues with our COPs that are dropping off because they're not going to be fully paid for. Also, I know you guys hired a consultant last year. I was out of town, my husband and friend came, Pat came, and they said we weren't going to need any more schools. We have 7,221 homes rooftops that are going to be put out in Southport between the three major projects, Yarborough, Liberty, I'm almost finished, Liberty and River Park. We are going to need more schools. You guys have to keep that in mind when you're putting this debt in place for the district office transport, or you know what I mean.
Got it.
Trying to make it quick, thanks.
All right, let's see. We are now on to information discussion item. See, presentation of Measure V, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. This is supposed to be Monique, but I guess it's DB. All right.
Good evening, board. Dr. Hildreth, Monique is very sorry that she's not here this evening, but she's home with an illness, so you get me tonight.
We'll be gentle, come on.
Educational code requirements provide that Measure V, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, provides an annual report to the governing board and the public to review expenditures made between February 22nd, 2023 through December 31st, 2023. So representative from Measure V, CBOC, Cindy Kansas. Pardon my setup. She's here to present the report this evening.
Good afternoon, nice to see you all again, Cindy Kassanis. I'm the chair of the Measure V Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. It seems to be a position I can't get out of, but other than that, all joking aside, the committee did try, attempt to meet four times this past year due to quorum and noticing issues. You only see two of those meetings in your report. We did find that the district did spend the funding that is left according to the requirements in, in the law. I would say that it sounds very promising that you may have the ability to spend down the remainder of the Measure V funds, which is less than $500,000. And as a committee, there has, there are currently remain eight, eight members. And of course, we're all volunteers. There are certain membership positions that we've been able to fill over the years. And so the sooner that you are able to spend down that money, you can retire that, and maybe some of those individuals will be interested in volunteering for Measure Z, which I also serve on and has had challenges in seeking a quorum. So I know the district staff and Monique and others have done an effort to recruit those in the community, and it's unfortunate that we're not able to get additional people to help on committees like these and serve according to education code and such. But I'm pleased to tell you that we are, your, your team is doing the right thing in terms of what we're required to do as the CBOC. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So we're in compliance?
You're in compliance? We've checked, you know, we've checked a box, we've met. We do get really great presentations from Kia Linux on a regular basis. So that is the other piece that has been, there's a continuation between the two measure, bonds, and it's easy to follow. Yeah, and I'm looking forward to seeing you all on Tuesday.
Great, hang on a second, Cindy. Mario, is there anybody wishing to speak on this?
No public comment.
Anybody else on the board?
This might be a question maybe for DB, and that is, the $500,000 that is remainder, that has all been earmarked, am I correct on that?
Yes, there's actually $383,000 that's left. And currently, we're out to bid on the River City High School basketball, the exterior basketball asphalt replacement project that will, that, what that is going to be used for.
Perfect, okay, thank you. And thank you for all of your work serving. I know that it is a lot of your time, and we really appreciate you.
I just have a quick question. So once it's been, does it have to be expended or earmarked before we can disband the CBOC? And you can move on to other things like Measure Z?
To be safe, it'll be expended. So what will happen is we have a, our next regularly scheduled meeting in September. So we did that in order to be done with the project before that meeting came around. We will have to do an audit, and we'll have to come back for that as well. But they won't, we won't need a, an actual CBOC meeting for that. We'll bring that here to you.
So you're not quite done with this yet, Cindy?
Not yet, but I'm working on it.
Yeah, by the way, anybody who wants to join, please, we need, we need members for the Measure Z. We've made this plea two meetings ago, and we still need you. So please, come one, come all. All right.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to the consent agenda, agenda minus, what is it? Three, four, C, which is moved to action item number four now. Is there anybody wishing to make a motion?
Move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the agenda is adopted, now down to action.
Before we start that, Vice President Pazati, there's, if I could, we have, now that it's been officially approved, we have some new administrators who will be leading our schools, and I'm, and I see two of them here. So I just want to ask them to stand so we can acknowledge. Our first new principal of River City High School is here, Craig Jorgensen, so welcome. Craig, we're very happy to have you. Just if you could just tell the trustees a little bit, come to the mic, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Come on up.
Yes, just a little bit about your, where are you joining, joining us from? And just a few words, and I know I didn't tell you that this was going to happen, so.
I just want to say thank you to the trustees, Superintendent Hildreth, for approving me tonight. I come from Stockton Unified as an assistant principal at a comprehensive high school there. I'm very excited to join Washington Unified. The staff here has been great. The people I've met in person and through email have just been very welcoming. And all I hear is, we are excited, we are excited, we are excited, and that makes me very excited to be here. And I'm also looking forward to meeting the team at River City and just getting into the work there. Everything I've heard here has made me more excited. There's the celebrations, it just tells me how community-centered this district really is and student-centered this district really is, and I'm really excited about it. So again, thank you. Um, my wife is here with me, so she was telling me, keeps saying, are you nervous? I'm like, no, I'm good.
Yeah, we thought you were at Deloitte. You know, it seems to be that we like to pluck people from Stockton to come and run our high school. So uh, it's good to have you.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Okay, we have another new principal who's joining us, but uh, she's not new to the district. So Mari Sela Romero is the new principal, has just been approved for Westmore Oaks. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you so much. Wow, you're really tall because I'm not short. Good evening, members of the board. I am absolutely thrilled to be in this new role. I cannot wait. Um, I seriously cannot wait. This is my, this will be my 16th year serving in Washington Unified. I taught for 10 years at Elkhorn Village in the middle school, um, English Language Arts and Avid and did all the things there and then joined over at Stonegate as the assistant principal and then made my way to the district office and hit that restorative justice. There's lots of celebrations, by the way, with that restorative justice and equity work. And now stepping into this role after having that global view of kind of how things work at the district level, I'm stoked. Also, we did Freedom Schools this summer. That's going to happen at my school. We're going to be implementing some pieces of that. Come visit, come visit. It's going to be awesome.
Absolutely. And Westmore Oaks kids are going to be lucky to have you there. Thank you, and staff, if that matters. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Let's see. Um, we're moving on to action item P1. Approval to enter into a lease leaseback agreement with XL Construction for the XL Elkhorn Village School Modernization Project. And DB, you're back.
I'm back. And this one's got a little bit of information, so you're with me. So back on February 25th, uh, 2024, the district selected Studio W as the architect record um, to provide the architectural design services for the Elkhorn Village School Modernization Project. Um, to continue this design phase, staff recommends utilizing the lease leaseback delivery method um, in order to enter an agreement with the building contractor and get them involved in the design process to provide the constructibility reviews, cost saving value engineering, master scheduling, cost estimating, budgeted, and ultimately construction services. Uh, the lease leaseback best value procurement procedures and guidelines as required by Educational Code Section 17406 were adopted by the board on January 24th, 2019. Um, the adopted best value criteria were, were included in the request for qualification slash proposals for lease leaseback construction services for the project. Um, also, if we could refer to the, the attachment that is part of um, this agenda item um, to view the total scores of the evaluation, the interview process that was held. Um, this agenda item authorizes the initiation of the lease leaseback process, not the approval of the final contract. Uh, the selected contractor XL Construction will collaborate with the district and architect to develop project drawings and specifications. Uh, through value engineering and other pre-construction services, the contractor will help refine the project scope and the budget. The estimated direct construction cost of $42.5 million will include the additional fee of $100,000 for pre-construction services. Um, if approved, XL Construction will develop the guaranteed maximum price or the GMP for the project through subcontractor bidding. The GMP represents the maximum construction cost the contractor guarantees. Once the GMP is confirmed, the administration will bring a final contract, construction contract to the board for approval. So the district has used lease leaseback before, um, and the Fallbrook Homecoming Project and also the Westfield Village Modernization Project.
All right, is that it?
That's it.
All right. Thank you, DB. I believe we have one public comment.
Yes, we have one public comment on this item. It's from Danny Langford.
So the 153 page document attached to this is a little daunting to go through, so I'm going to ask some questions because I was really hoping that there would be a presentation that would answer my questions. Does this prevent hiring union people? Has Stonegate, River City, Westfield and Westmore Oaks been paid off as lease leasebacks yet? I would like these answers to tonight if possible, or somebody to get back to me at least because nobody ever does. Guaranteed maximum price. What exactly does that mean? I've heard that so many times with all these bonds over the years and yet change order after change order after change order comes before you guys constantly to be approved. Um, what's the actual savings? Is there a savings doing lease leaseback? I ask that you please table this until you have a full board. Thank you.
Thank you. No more?
No other public.
Okay. Um, do we have comments or questions from board?
Hi, yes. Would you um, explain for us and for the public, the guaranteed uh, price piece?
So the guaranteed maximum price, the way the lease leaseback works is we have XL Construction, who has been hired as the general contractor. Um, as we get through the design process, when we have documents that are um, able to be put out to bid, they put these out to bid for all the subcontract. So the subcontractors bid on the actual work itself. Um, then we get together, the district included, the team will get together and we'll evaluate all those bids. There'll be multiple bids for each um, each trade. Uh, and then we will decide, you know, we can, we'll, as a team, um, you know, take, select those subcontractors. You take all that together along with general conditions and everything that else comes with the contract. Um, that will be the guaranteed maximum price. So that is what we have in there. Our guaranteed maximum prices are also built in with contingencies and allowances, which is very common. Every project has that. So when changes happen, whether it come from my team or unforeseen conditions or errors and omissions, it comes out of that allowance and that's built into that guaranteed maximum price.
How do you guys? Okay. Um, I do have a couple of questions. Um, my question for number one is I Okay, question number one. Let's go with what Danny kind of commented on was, we agreed to a PLA for Elkhorn.
Yes.
Does this in any way infringe upon uh, the ability to do a PLA?
No.
Or on the contractor's ability to hire uh, union staff?
No.
Thank you. And then can you define the term lease leaseback for us?
So I, a little bit of history on lease leaseback is many years, 20, 30 years ago, um, school districts that didn't have money to build schools when a lot of houses were coming up, they used to um, get with a contractor, a builder, and they would, they would say, I need this school and this is, you know, they would agree on a cost, right? So then you would have, they would build the school, you'd get, they would lease the land to the contractor, build the school, and then the district would make payments to pay off that school. That was the leaseback portion. Okay, that's kind of where it all started. Um, it has evolved over the years. Um, we still do the same type of thing. The land would be leased to the contractor. So technically during the project, it is their responsibility and their, you know, to do the work. Um, we will pay as we go throughout construction. Then there'll also be a um, a year's worth of payments after the completion. So we will, in the essence, the same way. We lease it to them, they do the project, we make payments as we go, and we also make payments after, and that's the leaseback portion. That make sense?
It does. The interesting thing, I mean, the way you explained the, you know, the PLA uh, or the contractor portion of it, there's a general and then there's the sub, right? Does the general contractor, does our PLA agreement apply to the general contractor of XL Construction or does it apply to everybody on the job?
It applies to everybody on the job. Um, XL Construction is a signature, a signatory union shop. So even if they have, if they self-perform, so there's some areas where if we don't get subcontractors in or it makes sense for them to self-perform a piece of the work, they're still um, attached to the PLA and they're a union shop.
Okay. Um, because I am concerned about the idea of subcontractors hiring independently their own staff, right?
They're, they're all tied to the PLA. It applies to everybody that was going to be doing work um, on this project. The PLA is attached and they all have to agree to that.
All right. Thank you. More comments? Question?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to approval of renewal of speech and occupational services with developmental therapy services of Sacramento Districtwide for the 2425 school year.
Good evening, trustees, superintendent, staff and community. I'm joined this evening by our special services director, Carla Salvo, who will um, ask for your approval of the renewal of the, which one are we doing this? The DTS contract. Go ahead.
Good evening, board and community members. Thank you. We are asking for the renewal of our um, contract with Developmental Therapy Services of Sacramento. Um, they are a long-term um, contract that are relationship that we've had with them. They've been providing us um, support with our speech therapists, SLPA's or speech language pathologist assistants, um, occupational therapists, uh, and as well as their CODAs, which is pretty much an occupational therapist assistant also. So um, the impact that it would have for the district is roughly about 700 students. Um, the speech specifically is about 550 students and then uh, the occupational therapist is the entire um, kind of preschool through adult, um, adult or special education that they support in a variety of um, consultation, direct services and also assessment for both speech and.
Okay, thank you. Is there a public comment on this?
No public comment.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm supportive of this move forward because obviously we want our kids to be serviced and we need them serviced right when we start school. Um, but I do think uh, some points that were brought up earlier were valid and I think that it's worth uh, maybe repeating. We've talked about it for a long time over the years. We've had contracts where it's really hard to fill positions. And so some of our neighboring districts have given some significant bonuses in these positions, especially in um, speech pathology to be able to hire their own. And so I just asked that um, I will vote to approve, but that we look at that at the same time of what our neighboring districts doing because of course we would, we would first and foremost, I know you agree with me, uh, have our own employees. And so uh, I want to make sure that that's said publicly.
Thank you. And I also recall something, uh, the speech pathologists were making the same as speech pathologist assistants? Is that what the hourly wage was on the contract?
Yeah, so um, every contractor does it a little bit differently in regards to how they outline their contract and how they pay their um, staff. So I know that that was something that was brought up before. So in my conversations in renewing these contracts, that was a specific question that I had. And the way that um, Developmental Therapy Services um, utilizes it or how they review it is that the SLP, the speech pathologist is, is always um, supervising and overseeing the, the assistant because that is their requirement through their speech board. The assistant can't necessarily work on her own. So that's why the, the cost is the way it's written out. Um, I will say that um, because of the conversations that we had, um, the rate that the, that this specific company gives us is um, is comparable to if we were to go with another agency that does split the difference between those two. Um, and the other thing to note is that um, I had reached out to other agencies to see if I can get, you know, a better rate and something um, that's more comparable for what we need, but they just can't fill the, the positions that we need. So um, so that's, that's, that was the response and a little bit of the rationale.
Okay, then I'm going to ask another question.
Sure.
Can we fill our own position?
So we've posted our um, speech position. It's been posted for at least five years, anywhere from one to three. And our current open positions are three SLPs. We don't have an SLPA position because we haven't been able to even fill our SLP positions. So we haven't gone the route of an SLPA. Um, and so we have um, probably since January, that's my best recollection, um, I've had um, four applicants that have come um, through that were in person because we've had some applicants that have applied that want to provide virtual. And that's just not something that I'm currently interested in hiring as our own. Um, and so the ones that I have been able to interview and they've been uh, good candidates, they have turned down those positions for really going for contract agencies.
So you just said hiring, you didn't want to hire our own virtual. Are we providing services virtually?
At this time, no, but uh, in the past, we have to cover maternity leaves just because that's what was available to us. Um, right now I don't have any virtual.
So is our dollar per hour equivalent to a hundred dollars per hour like in the contract?
So I'm not a hundred percent sure because some of the contract agencies uh, provide like year round work for their staff versus us. So I haven't made that breakdown of like, what, 184 days? So I don't.
Because I'm going to be asking you that same question on your next item.
Okay.
Okay. Um, with that, anybody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very much.
So the next is renewal of staffing agreement with Maxim Healthcare. Um, let's see. Autrian, Carla.
I'm back.
You're back.
Um, so this also is a renewal to um, our contracts. Uh, this maxim is specifically for our LVNs um, that are supporting our students that have diabetic asthma care or um, they are, serve as uh, help one-on-ones um, for like feeding or things along those lines. Um, so that's, that's the uh, the ask is to renew the, this contract.
Oh, public comment, Mario?
No public comment.
I think it goes with the same comment, just that we continue to look and keep a pulse of what people are doing in the region and if we can adjust rates to hire our own. I think it's an important piece to always have. I know that these are hard to fill positions everywhere in the private sector and in public, but I think it's important that we continue to look at, at um, what others are doing and if they are, if they are more competitive than us, if we're losing people because of that, um, then we should make adjustments.
So this one I actually have some experience with and so maybe I dive in a little bit here. Um, the hourly rate in which we're paying for staff in here is $65 an hour. My members that I currently represent in my own union have the same license as an LVN. They make the same wage as an LVN. They get paid $40 an hour. We are dramatically overpaying for the service. My question would be, would it be possible to increase our price that we're looking to offer our own staff in terms of flying our own position? Still below $65 an hour, but enough to raise it up to where we're attractive enough to bring staff in and provide benefits and a full-time gig and make and provide benefits and a full-time gig and make the continuity of care? Because what happens with, you know, with travel nursing staff is when somebody decides, hey, I want to go work somewhere else, they just leave. You may not have that same person the next day who doesn't know your students, right? So that happens with every single outsourced staffing agent. It's the continuum of care that gets, that really gets beat up. And to me, I call these medical mercenaries because they are going around for the highest dollar, right? And I'm very, very much sensitive to seeing things like this. I want to see, you know, nursing staff in our district full-time so we can know the needs of our kids and we can do it at an affordable rate, but still pay them a good salary. So I certainly hope, you know, oh, the one last question I had was, did we competitively bid? Did we do an RFP on this? And if so, how many bids did we receive?
So I reached out to other agencies for the LVNs and no one was able to fill other than them in the time span that I needed. And I just went with what I know and to be, knock on wood. And in regards to continuous care and support, two of those LVNs are coming back to us because they like being in our district. And then the other two are new to us, but that at least gives, gave me some peace, kind of thinking to your same thought process. If I didn't know the other company, I didn't know what I was going to get. And so that did support a little bit, but that's also another piece that's just hard with when I, when I am looking to fill positions outside of our own, is that not every outside agency can give me somebody in the timeframe that we need. And for the IEP, I have to, I have to be ready on day one.
What would be interesting, and I appreciate that, and I, trust me, I'm going to vote yes on this, but there's things to consider, right? And one of them is what are these LVNs that are coming in to work for us in the school district? What are they actually making? What does it say on their paycheck? Because I bet you it's not $65 an hour. And I bet you it's something we could be competitive with. So I think if we were able to get that kind of information, you know, it would be beneficial to us. We've got to be good stewards to our taxpayers' dollars. This is one thing where I certainly see, and the same would have held true for the last item too, is right? So anyway, those are my two cents.
Do you got? Yeah, just to comment on that too. And not just looking at pay, but since we have these long-term relationships with, with, you know, outside sources, just their, not only just their culture, but like what do they offer their people? Because it's not just pay, you know, there's got to be, you know, other things that they're experiencing, whether they have a better experience being, having that position versus being at a school district, just kind of as a school district, thinking of ourselves as, as, as business do. Like how do they attract their people? Just as, as having that relationship with them is just something I would, I would, I would be interested in.
Thank you. Anyone else? No?
I move.
All right.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Sorry to give you the third degree. All right, moving on. We are going to the consent item for C, approval of renewal of Sammy's Circuit Cater Camp. Stephanie and Autry.
Yes, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Stephanie Groot to request approval of the renewal of the Sammy Circuit, whose parent company is Cater Camp for the 24-25 school year.
Good evening. This evening, we are requesting the renewal of Sammy Circuit to provide a K-6 social emotional program. This program aligns with Castle V, which is the framework, which is the foundation for applying evidence-based SEL strategies. A study was conducted in 2022 for this program, which measured improvements in SEL competencies of students. Qualitative student feedback included a pre and post assessment in which better understanding for others' feelings, as well as students adopting a positive language towards themselves. Also, in the spring, as part of our LCAP adoption, a survey was sent to all K-8 principals, 100% of which reported that they wanted to continue with this program. Some of the information included that they would like more visits, which you will see in the contract, as well as that kids love the visits, they were happy to use the weekly lessons. This item aligns with LCAP B01, success in the early years, and is directly in section eight.
Thank you. Public comment?
No public comment.
Al, go ahead.
Yeah, so, thank you. So I'm actually a fan of Sammy himself. Seen him many times. I received maybe about, I think it was about eight different messages from the community concerned. The concern was the amount versus the pre-recorded. Is this a pre-recorded program? I've seen Sammy live and I know that it's amazing. Just, just to clarify for the community, how much of it is actual visits versus how much of it is pre-recorded content?
Yes, so this contract actually includes the pre-recorded lessons, which are new this year, as well as there are virtual family nights, there are virtual books, as well as there is an addition of in-person visits. So there are two per site for the school year.
And do we know the difference in cost between when it was in-person versus the amount it's gone up since now having a virtual or pre-recorded? Does that make sense? Like the, the contract, if these are new, if these are new lessons that are pre-recorded and virtual, by how much more did the, did the contract increase versus when it was just live?
It was never just live. It actually started about four years ago during COVID. It was 100% virtual. Then there was an addition when it went to the virtual recorded weekly lessons and then also in-person. And there is an additional cost because he is in-person more this year than last year. And I don't know the exact cost, but I, for last year's contract, but I can look back.
Yeah, I just, I'm just, I'm more so echoing kind of the, the people that were concerned about it. So yeah, if we could figure that out.
I was just going to say it.
Right now, yeah. And in the attachment on the agenda, and I apologize, I did not print that. It does break it down into what the in-person costs are for in-person.
Why don't we put a hold on this for a second while we do some research?
Title left, not coming up. Under Cater Camp? And it would have been, I do know last year it was in the consent agenda.
But it may be Cater Camp instead of Sammy.
Yes.
And what has?
August 4th. Read the August 4th.
Okay, so how many more, sorry, how many more, how many actual more in-person visits do we get? Eight more?
Eight in-person and then there's a couple of other components that are new as well. The virtual tracking, we are able to now see how many usage is, how many people use that program. And so we will actually receive that data in return so that we can monitor to see what classes are using it, as well as what families are attending our family nights.
Yeah, thank you for all of that. Just as, as somebody who visits sites consistently, I'm just the difference between having people on campus, the connection versus any pre, especially pre-recorded. That's something that I definitely do not support, especially, you know, the, just the trust that these kids are, you know, are on our campuses, watching any pre-recorded anything. I'm totally, you know, more about less screen time. So, you know, I'll, I'll listen to the, you know, the trustees and see what they'd like to do, but it's just that, that's the piece that's, that I'm just not for.
And just in regard to the lessons too, they are done with the teacher as well. So it's an engagement activity. And I can actually, the, the, some of the virtual classes were offered, well, are offered to all of our students over the summer as well. So I'm happy to provide you with that link so that you can see those as well.
So trustee Venegas, maybe this is an item because it sounds like you're not incredibly comfortable voting for this right now, which would mean it would fail. So maybe we put a pin in this until next board meeting when we have a full complement of trustees here and we can potentially get a, a better presentation of what this is and what it looks like. So we can do that. Sound good? Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to board governance, first read and adoption of revisions to Board Policy Administrative Regulation Number 1114, District Sponsored Social Media. Yorgos.
Good evening again. This particular item is pretty straightforward. We brought this item to the policy subcommittee last week to review some pretty standard changes. They really, the changes that are specifically to the guidelines and protocols for user engagement that we also promote and post on our social media pages. It just basically outlines essentially rules of engagement for how both parties, both the district and the community can conduct themselves on social platforms. The bulk of the, the changes are really designed to be more specific, whereas our previous protocols and guidelines, I would say, were more broad, a more broad strokes approach. But keeping up with times and emerging trends with social media and different strategies that are online in terms of engaging with the public, this is just something that many districts, including our legal counsel, has advised us that we should do moving forward to be on the up and up with these particular matters and strategy.
Just that I sat on the policy committee as we went through this and I think that these are positive changes. The district as an organization is obviously different than us as elected officials. We abide by different rules. But I think that these are really important to create a standard for our community of how we want to interact with one another in these spaces. And so we added a couple of changes, but overall I think we just made them more inclusive of all social media platforms. But otherwise, there was, it was pretty straightforward.
You got anything? All right. Thank you. Is there any one wanting to make a motion?
Well, it's a first read, so it's coming back for a second read. I don't think we have to make.
Recommends governing board approve the revision. TB and AR. So I, I know generally speaking, we do a second read and then approve it, but I believe superintendent Hildreth said if it goes to the first.
And President Coffey did ask me to share that she was at the policy subcommittee meeting. So she is aware of these policies and the conversation that were had at that meeting as in, in agreement, even though she's not here actually to vote on that. So if the board wanted to move forward, you can. If not, we can have it come back as a second read.
And to clarify, you heard no concerns from?
No.
From our other trustee? Okay, then I'm supportive to move forward if you're all's.
Do you have anything? Okay. I, I'll just quickly say, I don't have a problem with anything on here. I, just for a matter of policy, usually it goes for a first read, then a second read, and then an adoption during the second read. But if we know that President Coffey and Kirby Gonzalez both sat on the policy committee together and they both are okay with it, then I feel comfortable enough moving forward with it. So. Moved by trustee Venegas, second by clerk Kirby Gonzalez. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Both aye. All right. First read and adoption of board policy number 4119.24, maintaining appropriate adult student interactions. Hey.
Good evening trustees, superintendent Hildreth, staff and community members, hello. This is a new board policy for the district. This is focusing on positive school environment that protects our students. This is setting an expectations for all adults who come into contact with their students on campus, off campus, and having that highest professional standard. This also was presented at the board policy committee meeting on July 30th. This is based on recommendations from CSBA and there were some minor changes. I will call out with, and just minor changes in regards to language. The one thing that the policy committee recommended was when we're looking at mandated reporting and having to report any interactions that might not be, you know, safe for students, also calling out that, you know, district employees are prohibited from engaging in any behavior that might put a student in danger, for example, instigating conflict between two students.
Public comment, Maria?
No public comment.
All right. Policy committee comments.
So again, I was standing in on the policy committee because trustee Wong was absent and so it was with President Coffey and myself. And we read through this, you see in blue those tracked changes. And we felt like this was really important to bring forward, even though these are expectations that we have and we would think that our HR policies and others would cover it. We were really told that it's beneficial to have a policy like this put in place. So it's crystal clear what we stand for as a district and how we treat one another and our students. And so we were supportive of that and we felt like this was strongly worded and.
Was there any additional changes made from the two of you? Or, or was it just what was recommended by the VP and AR?
The blues recommendations that you see, the changes that was based on the committee that both trustees were a part of in that recommendation.
So we changed the word, for example, adult shall not intrude to encroach and we removed.
Deleted the rest. Right, got you. Okay. All right. Is there anybody wishing to make a motion?
I move.
Moved by trustee Venegas.
I'll second.
Second by clerk Kirby Gonzalez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I too.
Thank you.
All right, board and superintendent comments. Superintendent Hildreth, got anything for us?
Just a few updates. Thank you, Vice President Pazati. Good evening, everyone. As we stand on the brink of a new school year, I want to make sure I express my heartfelt gratitude to all of our staff who are working tirelessly over the summer to prepare our schools for next week. And just knowing that their dedication ensures that our students have the best possible start to the year. That's what everybody is focused on. I would also like to extend my appreciation as always to our partners with CSEA and WSTA. Your preparations and collaboration have been invaluable, Doug. Thank you because you've been coming in quite frequently to make sure that the information we want to start the year, as we've talked about it, we know what we want to share with our, our staff. It allowed us to be able to speak to our administrators. So we're all consistent messaging and I know that that has been something that. know that that has been something that WSTA and CSEA has been asking, like, let's, you know, make sure these policies and practices are consistent. But we couldn't have done that if you weren't willing to come in during your break. So thank you so much. Also, my conversations with Daniel really are going to make the school year start off well. So thank you for that. It's been a busy, productive couple of weeks. So on August 1st and 2nd last week, we held our annual administrative advance sessions. And that's where district staff and school leaders come together and we collaborate, we plan for the year ahead. It really is the time where we're making sure we're in alignment. And if we think about our strategic plan, the whole point of the strategic plan was taking misalignment and bringing it together so that we are aligned in what we're trying to do for our students. So we dialed into like, there's four core district priorities that we're going to be highlighting this year. And that's safety, student attendance, high quality first instruction and communication. So those are going to be the topics that you hear when we're presenting here to the board, to the community, what our school leaders will be sharing with their staff, and then highlighting what we're doing in each of those areas over the year to ensure that our community is well informed about what we're doing in support of our students. So looking forward to sharing more information throughout the year. So that was last week. Just this week, we had Back to School Resource and National Night Out with our community schools, our West APD partners, the United Way. We became a block party. So as National Night Out, there are different block parties that we've all attended over the years. And so it would always look like so much fun. Thank you to our student services team who said, well, we wanna, we wanna be part of a block party. And that vision just came to life. It was a fantastic way to kick off the new school year. We had a variety of free resources and fun activities for the whole family. We had more than 45 vendors who worked generously with our teams to support. We had between throughout the evening, we started at five and we ended at nine. So we had between 1,700 to 2,000 attendees in that time span. It was amazing. It was a true community. And it really showed community because it was like 103 degrees on the football field at 5 o'clock. And people were there. And they were having a great time. We had the water slides. We had food, our food services team was there. It just really was so great to see so many people there. We had all of our schools. We thought this was one last way to highlight all of our wonderful school communities, our school leaders, parents, support staff were there to be able to answer any questions parents might have. They had games and tables. It was great. And it was a true showcase of of community and school spirit. And so thank you for Vice President Pazati was able to get there, clerk Kirby Gonzalez, President Coffey were able to get there and and with your with your kids and and just be part of it. It was wonderful. So we hope to make that an annual event. So adding Washington Unified to the block party. Next week, that's what we're all like ready for, even though we were nervous and have butterflies in our stomachs because we're like, school is starting. So Monday and Tuesday, that's when we'll have our district kickoff. And that's our opportunity for me especially to really connect and speak with all district staff. And so on Monday, the 12th, our, that's when our certificated staff comes back. So they will start their day at their school sites, being able to be together, planning, just hearing what new information the administrators want to share. And then they will come to River City in the afternoon. We'll celebrate, talk about our goals for the year. And then WSTA will have some time to speak with their members. And then on Tuesday, we will do the same thing for our classified staff. Also, some of our classified staff will be doing professional learning on Monday before their official first day on Tuesday. So a lot is going to be happening. But the biggest event is our kids are coming back on Wednesday. So I look forward to not going to Target this weekend because I'm sure there will be a lot of people there. And since I no longer need to buy that backpack, I'm gonna let you all have that one. I I had my my fun with that. And then lastly, talking about our modernization projects and the investment that the community has granted us for work for kids. We have our ribbon cutting for West, nope, we did Westmore Oaks. We have our ribbon cutting for Westfield Village on Tuesday. It's going to mark the completion of our our first modernization project with our Measure Z funds. Our teachers are back, admin are back in there getting everything set up. It just is the marks the latest in a long line of of successes for the district. And it's really a testament to our community's commitment to provide top-notch educational facilities for our students. The ceremony is open to the public. It will be held at Westfield Village. And it starts at 11:00 a.m. We'll have a few words, a ribbon cutting, and then there will be tours for those who come. So you can see what our tax dollars have paid for. And with that, we're ready. We're eager to get our students and families back. And just thank you all for your continued support and dedication to our students and community. And we're excited to start the 2024-25 school year. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Trustee Venegas?
I'll make mine short. I, yeah, so we're getting ready for the school year. I actually was have the opportunity to keynote at CLSBA August 2nd, last week, last week. When they asked me to do it, I think it was like 100 degree, 110 degrees out here. I said, yes, Monterey, I'll take it, right? It was, it was great to see our yellow county people out there. The energy we have, I'm telling you all, compared to everybody else, just was having a great time. And the theme around that was just pathways to success. And and something that kept coming up was just leaning with love. And, you know, the difference between feeling watched and being seen. And, you know, we have an opportunity another year to see, to see that student, to see that teacher, to see that admin, to see that community member. There's such a power in being seen. And I think that that's what, you know, education does for so many of us. So it was just great being out there. Something else that was talked about was it is election year. So just as as leaders, not allowing that to be a distraction from from who we are. And, and, you know, what our mission truly is, at the end of the day, we're neighbors. We, we, we all want the best for our students, for our community. So just, it was just a great reminder of just anchoring down with gratitude and finding a way to just see each other and see and acknowledging the fact that we're all here because we, we really want to serve that greater purpose. So here we go, another year. Take your deep breath and let's get to work. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, trustee Venegas. Trustee Kirby Gonzalez, or clerk Kirby Gonzalez.
Great. Thank you. National Night Out was so special. And thank you to all of the people. We had so many of our principals, our leadership team, our classified employees, the community schools. And it was really fabulous to be out there. And it was hot. It was hot. But so shout out to June because she went down the inflatable that was, yeah, with water. She was drenched, just like my daughter was also drenched. They were pretty happy. So it was, it was really, really special and fun. And one of the things that I did was I talked to our kids and our families and, you know, said, what are some things you, our kids, they were mostly high schoolers I was talking to. But what are some things we can do better? What are some things you're happy about? And, you know, it always, it takes them a little while, some of our high schoolers. And, you know, they said, well, a lot of things are going, are going well. And so it's always great to hear that. And they're excited to come back. But then they, then they told me too, is they love that we're doing this work of welcoming our freshmen and all this work around freshmen, but also doing that too with our other kids, you know, our sophomores, our juniors, our seniors, you know, making sure that as they come back, that they feel that same passion. And I'm so glad that we have a high school principal who will be starting off the year with us there. And then our parents said to me, I thought this was really poignant too. She said, she had a to be senior, and she said, I really, you know, love being involved at the elementary. That's the places where they really pull us in. But as a, man, I have a, I'm gonna have a senior, and I don't really know how to navigate that in terms of the, you know, college experiences and what's happening. And I just feel like I maybe more disconnected at this age than I am at any of the others. And it's the time when I maybe really need to lean in. So I thought that that was really good advice, that we can just make sure that we target our our families too, who have our seniors and have our high schoolers. Because we do a good job of getting all of our elementary parents into schools often. They're going to be flooding back to school night, but making sure that we keep those connections. And, and I'm so excited. All of our teachers coming and our new staff coming and our classified, it really is an exciting time. And I'm so glad that we also have all of our principal staffed. We're so lucky. And our our kids are excited. And so I want to thank everyone for all the hard work they do. It's a lot of work going into school. I started today. It was my first day back to school with my kids in another district. And and it really is just a day full of kind of promises, although I remind myself of my first day 21 years ago, 22 years ago. And I sat down at my desk at the end of the day, and I thought, gosh, you know, I was going to intrinsically motivate every single one of these second graders and change the world today. And like, I don't feel like I did that yet. And so it reminds us too that we come in really gung ho. But it is a work in progress all year. And so just to harness that excitement as we go through. And I know my kids are excited too. They're, they're thrilled. They already have all their school supplies by the door. We had a two by two meeting with the city, and Vice President Pazati was there as well. So I'm sure he'll fill in on anything that I miss. We had quite a full agenda. We talked about the Claridan Campus Modernization. And with that, we had had a side, a letter of intent in 2017, as they were pursuing grants, that we could have a possible joint use on that back space. It's all of our playfields back there currently are just weeds. And so it would be a wonderful space for our, for our community to use. They want to use it, and the city is very interested in it. So we brought that up again. They're still very much interested in looking at that space and how they can turn those fields into usable fields for our families and our kids. And so to be continued on that, we discussed if that needed to come back to the board, or what we did for the process last time with the letter of intent, of course. No action is happening, but it says they pursue that grant. We also talked about the Westmore Oaks Backfield Partnership. That is a space that is connected to Westmore Oaks. But it's currently just kind of bad fields, go for holes, you know, it's, it's not a great spot right now. But we're working on it. And so we talked a lot about the work that the district has done with the Cool School Grant, as well as the Texas Tree Foundation Grant. And so to make that space safe and to put grass in. And so we are so glad that it will be there. But it's going to take a little while for the grass because of the heat. And then we talked to the city about how they can continue to make more enhancements beyond just the grass so that, and what that will look like. So that will come back to us. And we want to make sure that staff has input on that too. We also talked about the Sycamore Trail Phase 3. We do have an MOU with them. That's being worked in though by our legal team and theirs. And so they said they're about 90% done, but we didn't get details on that. Roadmap to the Future was moved to a future agenda item so that we can have the county come and present the work that they're doing there. How do you know about footsle, footsle?
You know what footsle court is?
Futsal courts? Okay, you should have been in our place because we had to have an entire update on like, what, what is that? That the city has some really exciting partnerships with SAC Republic. And so they're going to be putting in footsle courts. And we talked about spaces of where that could go. So we talked about maybe Yolo High School, you know, what are some of our spaces that we have? They have a couple of spots that they were looking at too. And then we shared about our summer programming. So it was a very robust meeting. And then lastly, for other business, I did bring up and share the plan way back from 2013 on the, that included back when there's a space for a school in a Liberty area, as well as a Yarborough area. And so we brought that back, and we talked about the work that the district had done in the past to make sure that we had plans to plan for that growth. There's been some changes since then. Enrollment is lower today than it is when I first joined this board. So there are some things that are different, but yet this is still a lot of homes that we need to be on the radar. And so we shared with the city that that work is happening, that our staff is working with the Yarborough project. And so, and we also have our demographer that is hired. We shared that as well to help work with us on incorporating that plan into, into our, making sure we can accommodate all of our. I think that's it. That was a lot.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to me, I wanted to say, wow, what a great job on the National Night Out. I started off at the police station and caravan with them to, can't remember the name, Las Casitas, is that it? The Las, yeah, I think it's Las Casitas, yeah. Apartments up in the north area, north area, right by River, River Bank, I think. I think it's called Riverbend. There's a, a retirement community up right next door. Okay. So I'm getting it. So I, we first started there. And in years past, that was like the big happening spot. It was not as big and happening this year. And but it was largely because they were all at the high school. And so we went to that place, and we stayed for a little bit, but we realized soon that many of these places, because we have, you know, the number one spot B, we went to place to place to place, and each one of them seemed to just be a little bit smaller in years past. And so the one place we did go to that was very festive, was the place by the Tower Bridge, the apartment complex right next to the Tower Bridge, and right next to Raleigh Field, our Rivercat Stadium, not Raleigh, sorry, keep doing that, Sutter, Sutter Health Park. That place had tons of kids, tons of people, very festive. I was very excited to see that a lot of the folks there were really, you know, enthusiastic about having the police and fire come out and and be a part of their National Night Out. And then, of course, branched off and came to National Night Out in the middle of the high school that had a ton of kids and adults. I don't know what the final number was, but it must have been close to 1,000 because there was over. Holy geez. That's, that's, yeah, that's shocking. That's more successful than I think we've ever had in total combination of all the stops that we've had in in previous years. Because that, I think that is a real way, way to go for the future. Yeah, it certainly is. It's nice to have little stops, you know, maybe for communities after. Because after that, I went home, and we had one on my street. And it was nice to, you know, meet up with community members and and people that I know. But I just want to say, good job to our, our high school folks for, and district staff for putting this together. It was amazing. I can't give you enough kudos for that. As I, you know, trustee Kirby Gonzalez did mention the two by two. I'm not going to go into it. You covered in great deal detail. I guess some of the other things that I covered it in in the last board meeting when we had the presentation, I'm, you know, I want to kind of go over it again, because I did hear comments from the public about this. In terms of the presentation that was, was made regarding the 10-year lease, I, I can't, in all honesty, support- I I can't in all honesty, support a 10-year lease. I mean, I understand that the district office is in terrible shape and we need our staff out of there. That I agree with. I'm not gonna dispute that in any way, shape or form. But we cannot pay a million dollars a year for a 10-year lease. That's 10 years plus the improvement allowance being given by the um landlord is only 800,000. The improvement allowance for Parkstone was 1.3 million. Smaller space, more uh improvement allowances, half the price. I understand that maybe we need a lot of square footage because we have a lot of district office needs. Um, maybe we need storage, but we can also decrease our footprint. And I've said this time and time and time again, that we need to consider this and have creative ways of thinking. People can tell work, we learned that from COVID, right? We can decrease our footprint. And the cost of Parkstone was half, it was absolutely cut in half. Now, I believe Danny, you made this comment, you know, about what about our uh our Performing Arts Center? That's exactly right, redevelopment funds can be used to supplement our Performing Arts Center bond. So I do not want to spend money on a rental when we can use that money to spend on something we promised our public we would do. Additionally, I think if we are willing, there has to be the will. If we're willing to look, look at ways in which we can decrease the amount of space needed at our DO, we can still find a lease for half the cost. And I think, you know, the space of 20,000 square feet versus 37,000 square feet, I think we can certainly cut a few um full-time spots in the DO to allow them to tell work or allow them to be in other spaces in our district where there are additional openings, additional space. Um, I think if we get creative, we can do it. So I hope we, I hope we really think long and hard about. The Kausters Building is um very similar to Parkstone, it's a little bit bigger floor plan. Um, but problem with that is it's $65 uh per parking space. That doesn't seem like it's a reasonable, a reasonable uh thing. So I just wanted to get this out to the to the public and and, you know, let them know that I think we can find something and can be done quickly. But I think it needs to be done creatively. So, because I don't want our 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 staff working in terrible conditions, that's certainly not. With that, um, we're on to future board agenda items. And let's see, we have 2425 Strategic Planning Budget and Governing Board Study Session scheduled for August 15th week, the next regular board meeting is the 22nd. WSD Cell Phone Policy Update, the 22nd. And School Resource Officers Discussion is, well, since 22nd is the next board meeting, that's when it is. Um, and with that, is there anybody wanting, willing to add something to our future board agenda items? trustee Kirby Gonzalez?
Yes, um, I would like to propose a special board meeting uh for district office. And I'd like to propose that it is on a um Saturday and that we start in the morning and we hash out a plan. Because I think having um it on a agenda that is robust, like it was last week uh or two weeks ago, I guess, and I apologize, I had a um a family commitment that I had expressed to this board before we even adopted our calendar, um that led me from not being there. But um, having that conversation within a full agenda, I do not think is, it clearly did not result in action by the board or clear direction. So I think what we need to do is we need to have um with our full board um a study session or maybe we put it on as discussion or action, but we need to come up with a plan. And I think that we need to spend the time that is needed on a Saturday so that we can have one when we leave and feel good about it. Um, because it's time to have one, whatever that may look like. Um, but that's my proposal and that we do it is um as soon as we can all get our agendas in.
Thank you. Trustee Venegas, anything? Okay, and I do not have anything. And with that, the agenda is clear and this meeting is adjourned.